I hate to cut Freddie Mercury off at the beginning of his song, but it's time to start the meeting. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held February 16th, 2021, at 6:00 PM at the Cottonwood Community Clubhouse. And we have our clerk with us virtually this evening, so if we could please ask Ms. Jimenez to take the role.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Kurov?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Narin?
Here.
Councilmember Wildon?
Here.
Vice Mayor Halls?
Here.
Mayor Olinsky?
Here, thank you. All right, next I'd ask you to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, next on the agenda, we have a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly known as for legal action. Councilmembers, do we have anything to report this evening? All right, Mr. Corbin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of updates. First, we were updated this morning by the county, and then we talked about it at our Economic Development Task Force meeting that you have every Tuesday afternoon. I just wanted to report, I sent an email out to council last week, the numbers for COVID infections are declining, and the hospital number of inpatients continues to decrease. We were at eight today, so it's even, it's probably the lowest number of inpatients with COVID since before November. So things are looking very good and very excited to be heading in that direction. Also, the county has given out about 9,000 vaccinations a week in the county. So things are moving along. I can tell you that our fire department continues to assist the community, both at Spectrum Healthcare and also at our school districts administering vaccines. So nothing but good news there. We did learn that the second vaccine takes top priority over first-time vaccines, so they're making sure that everybody who gets their first vaccine shot can get their second. And now there's talk about the latest vaccine making its way to Arizona, so we're going to keep our eyes open for that. So some good news on the horizon. Manzanita Outreach is offering a drive-through food share event where perishable and non-perishable food boxes will be loaded into the trunks of cars. The event will take place in the parking lot on the west side of Mingus Union School by the tennis courts. It'll take place on Wednesdays, once a month, 1st February 17th tomorrow, 4:00 to 5:30; then March 17th, 4:00 to 5:30; April 14th, and May 12th at the same times. For more information, feel free to reach out to Mike Newcomb at (928) 649-5772. I hope I didn't get out of his cellphone number right there. Get in trouble for that one. All right, and then the City Council Awareness Group meetings have started again with Councilmember Narin, hosted virtually via go-to meeting. These online meetings will allow the public to meet with City Council in a safe way. The next virtual meeting is scheduled on Saturday, February 27th at 10:00 AM, and the topic will be the City Council's strategic plan. Please visit the city of Cottonwood website's latest news to access the login information for meeting, or you can call City Hall at (928) 634-5526.
All right, very good, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is a call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, and comments are limited to a five-minute time period. And we have yellow forms for those who attend, thank you, in person. We encourage folks to attend virtually, but it appears many didn't get the memo, so we'll call you up as in order that I receive these. Again, you have three minutes. There will be an annoying buzzer that beeps at the end of your time. If we could have a preview of that annoying buzzer, please? It's not that annoying. I'll remind you when your time's up. But anyway, first up, we have Mr. Mitchell, John Mitchell. Good evening, sir.
Thank you so much for permitting me to speak. Mayor Olinsky and honorable council persons, I'm here tonight to speak about an alarming erosion of our rights codified into the National Bill of Rights, the extreme disunity in our nation which we all feel, and I'm afraid has gone far beyond policy differences. We live in a day in which up to half of the population feel disenfranchised and harassed by their own government, big tech, and media. Likewise, we live in a day where major segment of the population aided by the press is no longer satisfied with an electoral defeat in question of their opponents. Many speak openly of deplatforming, reprogramming, and even cleansing of political dissent. They have spoken openly about reeducating vast numbers of Americans and have encouraged censorship, censoring, bullying, and even denying the right of employment and access to financial services based on political affiliation. I'd like to briefly talk, what's the difference between rights and privileges? All right? Rights are recognized by men as societal norms and a form of freedoms that are available to people by virtue of being citizens of a city, county, state, or country as members of a society. Rights are generally known and always considered as fundamental and inalienable. A privilege is a special benefit or permission granted to an individual or a group based upon status, class, rank, title, or special talent. So where do our rights really come from, and where do privileges come from? Well, rights come directly from God in His authority, recognized by men. Privileges are granted by men through laws, ordinances, licenses, permits, through men's authority. The U.S. Declaration of Independence, being the precursor and forerunner of the U.S. Constitution and the Bill of Rights, clearly states this, and I won't go into that in any detail. I just want to leave you at this point in closing, and I've got some handouts for each of you if you'll permit me to give those to you, or you can have some person, okay, all right. "A nation of well-informed men who have been taught to know and prize the rights which God has given them cannot be enslaved. It is in this region of ignorance that tyranny begins," and that was Benjamin Franklin. Those are the very, those are the very originally codified rights that are even now under attack by the media, the social media, and even now our own government at various levels through increasing censorship of thought, word, and deed. It's now absolutely apparent to anyone with reasoning skills and even cursory knowledge of current events that this must not stand." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you for giving me the time to talk. It's an honor to be here. This evil doesn't surprise me. What does surprise me, however, is the ominous silence from my fellow citizens. This shouldn't be a partisan issue. The sentiment expressed in the saying, "I may disagree with you, but I will defend that right to the death." It belies the lack of outrage. I am hopeful you will join me to denounce voices of repression. Thought police and self-appointed fact-checkers have no place in a free society. Such ideas lead to total totalitarianism. I'm addressing you on this topic because I believe, as a community, we must unite, stand against de-digitalizing any peaceful and lawful-abiding citizen, no matter their political affiliation. Similar to the sanctuary county resolution in which our county resolved to not enforce any federal or state directive which conflicts with the Second Amendment, I'm asking our local government to go on record with a resolution promising non-enforcement of any federal-state order, directive, or mandate which conflicts the Bill of Rights in any of its particulars. I have prepared a proposed draft resolution which is included in the handout I am providing. I'm closing with Benjamin Franklin's quote, "We must all hang together, or surely we shall all hang separately." Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you. I have a short poem inspired by our current president called "Very Dark Times." Sun shines, yet it is dark. A breeze blows gently, yet it rates a gale. The air is clean, yet the filth covers our face. A tempest called tyranny is about us. We have spoken. Who will listen? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ray Lewis, you're up next.
Thank you. Is that a little loud? This evil doesn't surprise me. What does surprise me, however, is the ominous silence from my fellow citizens. This shouldn't be a partisan issue. The sentiment expressed in the saying, "I may disagree with what you say, but I will defend to the death your right to say it," belies this lack of outrage. I am hopeful you will join me to denounce voices of repression. Thought police and self-appointed fact-checkers have no place in the free society. Such ideals lead inexorably to totalitarianism. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. And next we have Dr. Bill, I believe it's Chackles, and I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name, sir.
Mayor Olinsky and honorable members of the council, you probably all don't know me, but some of these people behind me know me. My name is Dr. Bill Chackles. I'm a retired high school teacher from the city of New York, and I escaped oppression to be here in beautiful Cottonwood. I also, a long time ago, served 12 years in the United States Army. I come from a military and law enforcement family and background, and we were always believed, we were always told that we should believe in the Constitution, and especially the Bill of Rights and the first, those first 10 amendments, extremely important. I would ask you all to really, really pay attention to this topic. Last year, the county gave us a resolution, but we need an ordinance. We need more than a resolution. We need an ordinance that says the federal government will not come in here and take our rights away. And with that, I will pass the remainder of my time to whoever else is next. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chackles. And next we have Ms. Tina, is it Tudor? Ms. Tina Tudor? Again, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name. Is it Tudor? Okay.
I think everybody's been very uneasy of what's been going on in the world today, and it's just humiliating, and it feels like you can't really be yourself. And there's definitely, it's like fun is illegal, and I try to lighten up the world a little bit, okay? And it's turning very dark before our eyes, and it's getting a little bit disgusting. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tudor. Mr. McLean or Ms. Jimenez, do we have any who, out there who would like to virtually address the council this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one, Kevin Adams.
All right, Mr. Adams, again, you have three minutes to address the council, and let us know when you're ready.
Good evening, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mayor Olinsky, Vice Mayor Halls, and councilors. My name is Kevin Adams, and I'm both honored to speak this evening, and am the co-founder of Verde Valley Wheel Fund, or FUN as we like to call ourselves. FUN runs after-school mountain bike clubs at all eight public elementary, two middle, and one high school in the Verde Valley.
Mr. Adams, Mr. Adams, can you hear me? I'm so sorry to, I'm so sorry to cut you off, sir, but you're actually on the agenda, so if you don't mind, we're gonna, unless this is, you're speaking about an item which is not on the agenda, you're on the agenda coming up here before too long, so if you don't mind, if we can just hold you there virtually, and we'll get back to you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
That's it, okay. All right, very good. Well, thank you, folks, for being here this evening, and we will then move on to approval of the minutes of the regular meetings of January 19th and February 2nd, 2021.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made a motion, and Councilmember Wildon seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, minutes are approved. And we've rolled into unfinished business then. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker under unfinished business. First up is ordinance number 693 repealing section 10.16.080, use of handheld devices of the city code. This is the second and final reading.
Mayor and council, good evening. As you recall, this is a little bit of housekeeping. The state has legislated in this area about hands-free driving, and it did so just after we adopted an ordinance. So we are repealing the local ordinance that's potentially in conflict with the state law.
All right, we did go over this before. This is the second reading. Any other questions from council? Any comments from the public on this item? All right, then I would go ahead and motion to approve ordinance number 693.
Second.
All right, Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Henry seconded it. If we could ask our clerk, please, take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurov?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Halls?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes. All right, ordinance passed. Thank you. And if you could, please read ordinance number 693 by title only.
Ordinance number 693, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yabapai County, Arizona, amending Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.16, Operation of Vehicles of the Municipal Code by deleting Section 10.16.080, Use of Handheld Devices, which was adopted by ordinance number 656. Mr. Mayor?
All right, thank you. And then next, under unfinished business, this is a recurring item that we have. It's the monthly financial report. This report is from November 2020. And council, do you have any questions on this report? Do you want to give a brief summary?
No. Mr. Mayor, it's in there. I'm available to answer questions if you have any.
No, again, it looks great, and I really do appreciate it being on here. It's good for the public to see that, and it's, of course, good for us as well. All right, let's go ahead and roll on to the consent agenda then. Following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by council, and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. Seven items tonight under consent agenda. I'll read them in order. Item one is resolution number 3083, appointing Greg Miranda, a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. Item two, resolution number 3084, appointing a member to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Item three is final plat approval for Phase Two of the Kendra Heights subdivision. Item four, one-year extension of the professional services agreement with fireworks productions of Arizona for the 2021 Independence Day fireworks display. Item five is approval and acceptance of grant funding for the Cottonwood Police Department from the Arizona Department of Homeland Security. Item six, extension of premises liquor license application submitted by Amel J. Mullen, agent for Cove Mesa Vineyard LLC located at 741 Air Parkway, Unit 9. And last, item seven, resolution number 3085, supporting trails and outdoor recreation. Is there an item that a council member would like to have pulled from the agenda? Is there an item that a member of the public would like to have pulled from the agenda? All right, I would motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, Mayor made the motion, Councilmember Narin seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's approved, and if we could, ask the clerk, please, to read resolutions number 3083, 3084, and 3085 by title only.
Resolution number 3083, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Greg Miranda, a member of the city's Historic Preservation Commission, and establishing his term of office. Resolution number 3084, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yabapai County, Arizona, appointing Shannon Kling, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and establishing her term of office. Resolution number 3085, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yabapai County, Arizona, recognizing the importance of trails and outdoor recreation to the city, its residents, and its visitors, and urging the Arizona Legislature to adopt SCR 1046 and HCR 2034. Mr. Mayor?
All right, thank you. And my congratulations and appreciation goes out to Mr. Miranda and Ms. Kling for applying for our commission, so we appreciate that. All right, new business. Following items are for council consideration, excuse me, discussion, consideration, possible legal action. First item up tonight is Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am Kirsten Lennon, the Financial Services Director, and tonight we have with us Vanessa Burke, who is going to present a presentation on our CAFER, which is our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2020. In your packet, you also have the single audit, the annual expenditure limitation report, and the FERF report. So for now, I'd like to present Vanessa Burke. She's gonna give her presentation. Thank you. We can't hear you, Vanessa.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Excellent, and everybody can hear me now.
Yes, we can hear you. Good evening.
Okay, excellent. Good evening, how are you this evening?
We're great, thanks for being here.
I'm pleased to be here. I'm not a go-to-meeting expert, I'm a Zoom expert and a Teams meeting expert, but not a go-to-meeting expert, so bear with me as I get kind of situated here. So my name is Vanessa Burke. As Kirsten indicated, I am the partner, engagement partner on the audit for Cottonwood. I've been the engagement partner for the past four years and was conferring partner in year one, and so this really wraps up kind of our fifth year on the contract. And so I'm pleased to be here. My conferring partner is Ken Coon, he is also our founder and managing partner of the firm. He could not be with us tonight. We're all attending the California State Municipal Finance Officers Meeting this week, as well as Andrew Roth, the director. I had two council meetings tonight. He is the engagement manager responsible, and I think you all have met him, or most of you have met him in previous meetings with you, and he cannot be here because he's doing another presentation for me. So tonight you have me. I don't know how long I have to present, but I'll try to keep it short, relatively short, under 10, 15 minutes, and then open it up for questions. So I'm pleased to present the results of the audit. The audit that we're talking about is for fiscal year ending June 30th of 2020. You have a very large agenda packet in front of you. I think most of that includes the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and that'll be primarily the main focus of the audit. So I guess I'm gonna have to page down. So what I'm gonna go over tonight is really what our scope of work entails briefly. I will go through our required communications with you, those charged with governance, our responsibilities under the audit, as well as management's. Very brief slide on our approach to the audit. I'll talk about audit results, give a brief overview on the financial statements, talk about financial indicators, and any key pension and OPEB information. So scope of work. So each year, we're engaged to perform the audit of the financial statements, which are contained within what you have in front of you, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and there's a slide in the deck a little bit later. What we really actually focus our audit on is on the basic financial statements. The Government Finance Officers Association is where you file your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report in order to obtain your award for financial excellence, and, but that encompasses several schedules and reports that are not audited, and I'll talk about that. In addition, you're subject to a single audit under the Uniform Guidance or Government Accounting Auditing Standards, the GAGAS Audit Book, which is in lay term, is called the Yellow Book. Some of you may have referred to it as such, and when you spend as an organization more than $750,000 in federal awards, which the city has, you are subject to a single audit. So we also perform the single audit, which is a document in your packet. State of Arizona requires that you have compliance examination engagements performed. One is an annual expenditure limitation report, and the other is the Highway User Revenue Fund Report, and we perform various tests of compliance as part of that examination engagement. We do describe also any other non-audit services that we perform for the city, really for purposes of your understanding that we do assist in the preparation of the financial statements. Our standards consider assistance in that preparation as an independence, potential independence issue, and that we, as a firm, have to establish specific safeguards in place to ensure that we're not taking any level of responsibility for those financial statements, and that safeguard includes Kirsten having responsibility for those financial statements and overseeing our work and that preparation. So it's really, as you saw in the staff report, a collaborative process between our firm and her. I'll next talk about, the next two slides, I'm gonna go through our required communications with you, those charged with governance, and that is required under our professional standards, and really that includes management and U.S. City Council, and ensures that we both have an opportunity for two-way communication. In addition, we do communicate other things during the audit process, whether it's by meeting with you. Some of you on city council, we've held those meetings, as well as confirmation processes with you, and other meetings during the audit and correspondence. So really, the main areas that we go through as part of our required communications is, one, this is a new requirement to disclose to you whether we have any ethics and independence issues, and we've complied with all relevant ethical requirements related to independence, as well as evaluated safeguards related to the preparation of the financial statements. Second, required communication is to disclose to you any changes or significant accounting policies that were adopted in the audit year 2020, ending June 30th, 2020. We've disclosed, the city discloses all significant accounting policies to you in Note 1. That's a pretty significant note as it governs the recording within the CAFER. The only standard that got implemented last year, which we want to point out, is GASP Statement Number 95. So the GASP, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, that's your standard setter for generally accepted accounting principles, they allowed a postponement of certain effective dates of certain standards, and they did that as a result of COVID. They issued this before the end of the fiscal year, and so we encourage essentially all of our cities throughout, all of California, Arizona have implemented the standard and postponed those effective dates. That's disclosed in which ones it's impacted in Note 1. The other item to point out as part of our required communication is whether there are any significant estimates that are made in order to determine the numbers and amounts that are reported in your financial statements. And though we look at this in terms of materiality, we think that there are four areas that are significant to your financial statements. This has not changed since previous years. The first is fair value of your investments. You have a large investment pool, and those are categorized by level and type of investment, with level 1 being the lowest level or relying on quoted market prices that are readily available and can be seen, as opposed to level 3, which is the more subjective level of pricing. And I just would like to report that you do not possess any level 3 investments, so all of your investments are either in the first or second category or uncategorized. Depreciation on capital assets is significant. You've had substantial investment in infrastructure in past years, and so we do look at your depreciation on capital assets as part of our audit, because there is significant estimation in determining not only the cost to place those assets in service, as well as useful life and past history on useful life. The other two categories are pension and OPEB, and it's got liability and asset. You're in the ASRS and PSPRS, and so those have specific estimates and assumptions. Those are disclosed, those that are most significant are disclosed in the financial statements, such as things like discount rate, and we'll talk about that on a later slide. I don't know if I hit. Can I go to the next slide, right? Yeah. If, this is a 200-page document, and I know you've all had it for a month or so now, so you probably had a chance to go through it. But if I was to point out anything that's new or anything that's significant, it would be the following four footnotes. We talked about policies. The next is just excess consideration provided for acquisition of the water companies. And then Note 10 and Note 13. Note 10 is your pension and your OPEB, which supports basically the net pension and OPEB liability that's reported on the financial statements. As well as Note 13, we included this year due to COVID-19 commitment and contingency, mainly it's a contingency, not necessarily a commitment. But the contingency that we wrote, don't really know the impacts of COVID as of today fully on the city's financial statements. But I know with your monthly report that you're monitoring that closely. Let's see, next slide. The following items are areas that are also required, is whether there were any unposted or uncorrected misstatements that we would need to report to you. I think in the past, we may have had some of those, but this year, I'm very pleased to present that there were no audit adjustments. Audit adjustments would be adjustments that were made after we received your closed trial balance for audit. And then any uncorrected misstatements are those that we came upon during the audit that didn't rise to a level of materiality, that we kind of hold on a scorecard, and at the end, we evaluate it in the aggregate there material. We did not have any of those to report this year. As well, there was no outside consultation with other accountants, no significant difficulties in the engagement, and no disagreements with management in terms of accounting treatment or procedures performed. We'll talk about audit responsibilities next. So really, the audit, as you saw, was collaborative. You can see on management side that really you're responsible for the financial statements, presenting them in accordance with GAAP, which is established by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, adopting sound accounting policies, maintaining internal controls over financial reporting and compliance, and then providing us support and evidence during the audit, and lastly, preventing and detecting fraud. Ours is to perform the audit of those financial statements, ensure that it's in conformity with auditing standards. Our audit standards are in conformity with our auditing standards, generally accepted, as well as government auditing standards, and communicating with you, those charged with governance, which is what we're doing here tonight, as well as during the audit, assessing audit risk of internal control over financial reporting and compliance. And if we were to have any reportable conditions, we would present those to you as part of our reports. And last, determining fair presentation of the financial statements and rendering our opinions. So our approach to the audit, I won't go through this in detail, but generally, the audit is about a six-month process. This was an interesting year because of COVID. We learned to conduct audits with the full audit being conducted remotely. That didn't necessarily present a burden to us, because we're always remote when we're out at our client sites, but it did provide more of a burden, I think, to your staff, which I have to give kudos to them, in providing information to us in electronic format. And so generally, you know, we started your Phase 1 back in July. Phase 2, we do in conjunction with Phase 1 in July, and then we came back in Phase 3 in October, early October, to do the validation and testing of your account balances. And we usually finish up with issuing the report and any drafts and back and forth review in the December timeframe. And then that allows you to file your report with GFOA. So next slide is our audit results. So for the audit, we issued what I would call unmodified opinion, and often in lay terms, people call it a clean opinion. That's kind of going by the wayside, but essentially, that's the highest or best opinion that you can receive. There's nothing greater. It goes down from there. And what that means is that by each of your opinion units, as described in the financial statement, that those are presented fairly in all material respects, in conformity with GAAP, and that you've applied your accounting policies consistently. Those estimates that we talked about a little bit ago were reasonable and supportable, and that the disclosures are properly reflected. In addition, we had the Highway User Fund Report, the Annual Expenditure Limit Report. Those were all in compliance. We had no findings from those. And we did complete the single audit, which I didn't put on this slide, but we did have one finding in the prior year that you saw in the enclosed attachment. That finding was resolved in the current year. We did not have any findings in the current year for the single audit. The current year's single audit, you had spent about, you spent $2.4 million in federal awards. We tested the U.S. Department of Transportation Formula Grant Program. That's about 75% of that number. So we're looking at testing or sampling on about 1.8 million out of that 2.4 million. I do expect next year, we did not test CARES Act funding in 2021, because you didn't have enough spending for it to rise to the level of testing, but I suspect that that may kick in next year. Next few slides. I'm gonna go ahead and skip over the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, but as I discussed earlier, certain sections are unaudited. You can see that in the presentation. If you were to spend any time looking at the document, the MDNA Management's Discussion and Analysis is really the more, I would say, lay-term discussion of the document and really tells the story. And spending time there is very useful, as well as I do like to look at the financial trends. This is unaudited information, but it is important in painting the picture for the city. So this page, I'm gonna walk you through briefly just the financial statements themselves. The government-wide financial statement is composed of two-columned presentation. This is on a full accrual basis. It presents both your governmental activities, as well as your business-type activities on a full accrual. And what that means is it includes all your long-term assets and all of your long-term liabilities, including your pension and your OPEB costs. So if you looked at your year-over-year change, you can see that your net position at the bottom increased by 3.1 million. And though this is just the governmental piece, you had an increase in sales tax year, this year, of 2.1 million. And so most of that increase and that change is coming from that. When you look at your assets, again, that sales tax change is coming into the assets because you're collecting cash from the increased sales tax in spite of COVID. And in addition, you had capital additions this year in governmental activities of 593,000. Total liabilities went down slightly, 431,000, but you did have debt service payments of $2 million in this year related to your capital leases and your revenue bonds, and that was offset probably by, in all likelihood, increases in your pension liability for a net change of 431,000. Next slide. So change in net position for your governmental activities. Again, this is all activities other than the enterprise activities on a full accrual basis. The change in net position presents transactions for a full year, whereas the statement of net position presents at a point in time at the end of the year, June 30. And here, as you can see at the bottom left-hand column, you can see that change in net position of 3.1 million that I talked about on the other slide. And how I presented this is, you can see your program revenues have gone up very slightly, stayed relatively flat by about 85,000. Some of the charges for services went down, which we would expect with COVID in the last, you know, four months or so of the year, but that was offset by your increase in your operating grants and capital grants during the year. Expenses went up by about a million, 1.1 million, but you can also see down below on your general fund, general revenues, those have increased by 2.2 million. And again, your sales tax increased to 18.6 million from 16.5 million. So overall, a better year in 2020, so that was good news. Next slide is your business-type activities. So this is your water and wastewater. You can see that your total net position increased by 3.5 million year-over-year, and most of that was just operating income of 3.2 million, produced cash flow from operations of about 5.9 million. Total capital asset additions this year was 739,000 in your business-type activities. And in your liabilities, you can see that those are going down from 27.1 to 25.9 million, about 1.2 million. You had debt service payments of 1.5 million in principal. Change in net position, again, this is relatively flat overall. Year-over-year change, you were producing income in the prior year of 3.1 million, and this year it was about 3.5. So slight increase uptick in your charges for services this year, and you held your expenses stable in your business-type activities. So overall, a very flat year for the business-type activities. Next is really just a view of the general fund. The general fund balance at June 30 of 2020 as compared to 2019, you can see a substantial increase here of 3.4 million year-over-year. And again, with the sales tax increase, that is actually affecting the general fund probably the most significantly, which you'll see on the next slide. So you can see that your revenues have gone up, but you also did a great job in holding your expenditures off in this year, dealing with the response to COVID of a decline in expenses from 23 million down to about 20 and a half million. So overall, your change in fund balance, coupled with your increase in your sales tax, resulted in an increase of 3.3 million. All right. Financial, key financial indicators. So we do like to look at on the governmental activities, this is government-wide nest cost of services as, so this is all cost of your services for governmental-type activities, offset by program revenues. How much of your tax and state share revenues help to offset that net cost of service? So that you can see that, you know, really, that net cost of service is only about 87% in the current year, little less than last year, nothing too alarming. Last year was 91.99%. So you are covering your net cost of services after program revenue with tax and state share revenue. We don't always see that to be the case, but for City Cottonwood, that is. You can see with the influx of revenue here, you've increased your ratio of your unassigned fund balance for the general fund. This is really your key operating fund for the city. You know, after all, your restricted funds get separated between your business-type activities, any special revenue funds for capital projects, debt service, or restrictions. This is the fund that would fund for contingencies and things like that. And we look at unassigned fund balance for your ability to cover those kind of contingent events and have available to use for uncertainties. The GFOA recommended guideline is about 16.67% or two months of reserves, but obviously, we've all been COVID for a lot longer than two months. So that clipped up to 34% and is definitely an indicator to continue to monitor as we march through COVID. Here, you can see your ASRS, you're in a cost-sharing plan along with other agencies throughout the state of Arizona. What this screen presents in the middle column is where you're currently booking and recording your net pension and OPEB liabilities. The current discount rate being used, which we talked about as a significant assumption, is 7.5%. If that current column, you can see your pension plan number is a positive number, or it's actually a liability of 11.4 million. Your health benefit supplemental plan has a net pension asset or net OPEB asset, and your long-term disability has a net OPEB liability. Those are small in comparison to the total. But if the board was to change their discount rate and their assumptions and their actuarial evaluation, you can see you would go from about 11.5 million if they decreased the rate by 1% to 16.4. We see an increase in rates that would go down to about 7.3 million. The next slide shows your public safety pension retirement system. And here, again, you're split between, you've got tier 1 and 2 as kind of aggregated together, and then tier 3 is on a separate slide. Most of your employees are gonna fall within your tier 1 and 2. You're booking here in this middle column, the current discount rate used for this year is 7.3. And if it was to drop to 6.3, you would see your pension and OPEB costs go from 14.2 to 18.8. And if it was to go up, it would drop down to 10.5. Next slide is your tier 3. This is so small, these are in the thousands of dollars, so we don't really see the impacts of tier 3 happening today. That'll be one of those paid forward items as the younger generation comes into the pension plans. So I won't spend any time on that. And so with that, that concludes my prepared remarks, and I will take any questions. How I can see you all again, because I've lost seeing you.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Burke, for the presentation. Counsel, do we have any questions?
I just had one, just a brief clarification, and thank you for the presentation and the information, Ms. Burke. I appreciate it. So Note 11 outlines our net position deficit, our expenditures exceeding appropriations for our debt service. Can you explain a little bit more in detail what the significance of that Note 11 is, please?
So Note 11 is required under Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and what it describes is essentially where you have variations, where you're exceeding your appropriation limit. And so generally, this is for the general fund. So you had debt service expenditures that exceeded the appropriation by 225,000. So it's a required disclosure, but you manage your budget at a departmental level. Overall level, it's a line item within the budget, but it's required to be disclosed at the line item. So there was more than sufficient amount of reserves or other budget categories that came in lower. And you can see the detail of the budget in the RSI schedule, if you wanted to see where that came from, and that would be on page 100 of your report. And you'll see it's the only negative line, but the total expenditures came in under budget overall by 341,000.
So in our budget, though, we didn't allot an accurate number as far as the debt service expenditure, or we didn't appropriate a sufficient amount? Is that essentially what this is saying?
Yeah, and I guess, Kirsten, I don't know if you want to address your budgeting process on debt service?
I think it was just an error in the year, like, we didn't put in, allocate the right amount for that payment for that year. And so, you know, it does happen sometimes, but there was plenty of sufficient coverage in the other funds to cover it. And we do do it on the fund level, not, you know, we budget for everything. So it wasn't an overage in payment.
I understand. I just would hope that we get an accurate picture, especially moving forward, especially with regard to our debt service.
We will make sure that that happens. We will make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
All right. Counsel, any other questions for Ms. Burke? Will we have her? Well, great job. You said you weren't so, so good with the GoToMeeting platform, but I think you did really well. And you could now add that to your resume, and we don't charge for the training, so it's kind of a, kind of a win-win.
Thanks so much. I know, I was probably looking to the side, because I have two screens, and it was hard, I did, couldn't see you all. I miss seeing you all, by the way, in person. And I don't, is it snowing up there today? Because I've been up there.
No.
Yeah, text about all the snow. I've been there when it's been snowing, so I really miss my drive up there. But hopefully, next year, we won't have to do this remote. That's my hope.
We, we're looking for, forward to that as well, trust me, yeah. All right. Well, I'm really pleased to see there weren't any significant findings like there were last year. This really, kudos to Ron and your financial team. You guys have really done a good job this year. And thank you, Ms. Burke, as always, for this report, and we appreciate your time.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it. Now I gotta figure out how to drop. I got it.
All right, counsel. Any other discussion? Anyone like to make a motion?
I move to accept the city's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Narin made the motion, and councilmember Wildon seconded it. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurot?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a request by the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition to waive fees for code review, conditional use permit modification, three zoning verification letters, and a fire sprinkler installation permit. Mr. Paget with us to present this item, I believe, this evening?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Mayor Linsky, members of the council. As you stated, this is a fee waiver request from the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition. Staff has been working with the homeless coalition on a modification to their existing conditional use permit to allow additional hours for their operation. The fees that they're requesting to be waived is $100 for the code review board review, the conditional use permit modification of $175, three zoning verification letters totaling $510. And in this case, they are moving ahead with installing sprinklers at that location, so the fire suppression fee would, is estimated at $300. So the total fee waiver request, you have processed two of these in the past. They are going to be reviewed, the conditional use permit is up for review by the planning commission this coming Monday, February 22nd. So with that, that concludes my, what I have to say. We also have a couple of individuals from the homeless coalition. Should you have any questions of them at some point?
All right. Very good. Thanks, sir. Counsel, do we have any? Before we begin, I should disclose to counsel and the public, as I do anytime we discuss the homeless coalition, I do serve on the board of the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition. It's not a paid position for me, and in speaking with our attorney, there's no conflict, so. But I just want to disclose it to everybody. So counsel, do you have any questions for staff? Would you like to hear from the applicants?
I don't know that it's necessary.
Okay.
I'm ready for a motion.
Great.
I move to approve the request to waive the grading permit application fee of $1,000.
Ms. Wildon, it's, that's another request later down the agenda. This is...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, item two.
Wrong one. Okay. I move to approve the request for the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition to waive the code review fee of $100, the conditional use permit modification fee of $175, fee in the amount of $510 for three zoning verification letters, and building permit fees in the approximate amount of $300.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by councilmember Wildon and a second by councilmember Narin. Ms. Jimenez, could you please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurot?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Next up is a request by Verde Valley Wheel Fund Organization to waive the grading fee to construct a bike skills park at Mountain View Preparatory School. Mr. Ellis?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel. This is a request Verde Valley Wheel Fund approached the city. They are working with the Cottonwood Creek School District to put in a bike skills park at Mountain View Prep. It does require a grading permit, however, they're asking for that fee to be waived so they can direct their funds to building the bike park itself. That grading permit fee is approximately $1,000. And Mr. Kevin Adams is here on behalf of Verde Valley Wheel Fund to answer any questions you may have as well. As you remember, he spoke a little bit earlier, so that's what he's here for, if you have any questions for him.
All right. Very good. Counsel, do we have any questions first for staff on this item? Okay. All right. Mr. Adams, the floor is now yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. As I said, Fund Runes have to school mountain bike clubs at all eight public elementary, two middle, and one high school in the Verde Valley. We also have an earn a bike program where we reward a 125 new mountain bikes, locks, to students who exceed school standards in attendance, citizenship, and conduct, and will award 47 bikes if we can get bikes this year. That's our plan. But trying to get bikes during a pandemic is very difficult. Bikes come with lifetime free maintenance from the Verde Valley Bicycle Company, and we operate all 11 clubs with 33 volunteers and three contract coaches. In Cottonwood, we run after-school clubs at Mountain View Prep, both elementary and middle schools, and the elementary schools of Dr. Dana Bright and Cottonwood Community. And on this Thursday, our first high school club, Mangus Union High School, begins. Eleven months ago, Cottonwood Elementary School District's school superintendent, Steve King, asked Fund if we would help him realize his vision of an on-campus bike skills park at Mountain View Prep, as there's no suitable place for the clubs to operate on campus. So what the school does is bus the students and their bikes to local trails, such as those at Deadwood State Park. In 2020, Fund spent hundreds of hours fundraising to make it happen, and I'm happy to report that today, work began on this bike skills park, and this would not have been possible without the city's support. Specifically, I'd like to thank city manager Ron Corbin, and following city employees who basically sharpened us, because we had no idea what we're doing and dealing with the city, applying for permits, Fund through the process. So I'd like to thank Gary Davis, David Hauselman, Rick Contreras, Paul Hodges, Amanda Wilbur, James Paramble, Jack Teal, Scott Ellis, Martin Smith, and all those behind the scenes who made what would have been a daunting process for us, a bunch of mountain bikers, relatively easy. The Fund works cannot thank the city enough and council enough for its efforts in making this bike skills park possible for the Mountain View kiddos. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Do we have any questions, counsel, for Mr. Adams? Would anybody like, any discussion or would like to make a motion? How do we feel about this request?
I'm in favor of it, so if you'd like, I can go ahead and make a motion, and that would be, I move to, unless there's other discussion.
I don't think so. Everyone's quiet tonight, so I think you're good.
I move to approve the request to waive the grading permit application fee of $1,000 for Verde Valley Wheel Fund for construction of a bike skills park at Mountain View Preparatory.
Second.
All right. We have a, excuse me, a motion by councilmember Henry and a second by councilmember Matthews. And Ms. Jimenez, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurot?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good. Thank you. All right, folks. Next is ordinance number 694, delegating rule-making authority over to the dog, over the dog park to the city manager. Lucky you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Jack Teal, the Parks and Recreation Manager here at the city of Cottonwood. And as you had alluded to, I'm here tonight to talk about the dog park and the rules and regulations that we have. Currently, we operate off of the 1993 Parks and Recreation Code, and more specifically, ordinance 560 that was brought before you guys in 2010. During that process, the rules were brought into the code. So to make any adjustments to those rules, to change them, we'd have to go through the process of changing the code. So what I'm here tonight is to ask your guys' consideration of adopting ordinance 695, which will grant the city manager or designate authority to change those rules as needed. And I have a short, brief presentation here tonight that'll give the benefits of why. Some of the things is the code being written in 1993. The facility rules that were written into that code become outdated, and over time need to be changed and dressed up. And without coming to council in front of you guys and changing that through the code, it makes that process difficult. So some of those ARS state statutes that are listed on them and things like that change over time, which makes it a little bit harder and gives us a little less flexibility to do what we need to do with those facilities. So the next two slides, you have your current dog park rules and the proposal of new dog park rules. And a little bit later, I'll talk about exactly what's changing. But in here, you can kind of see the first one. There's a lot of writing on it. There's a list of rules, and the main reason I'm here tonight is that bottom rule. The bottom rule in there has a clause that says pit bull breeds are not allowed within the dog park. However, about five, six years ago, Arizona State was one of 20 states within the nation to adopt state legislation that says you can no longer discriminate against dog breeds. But that sign had been up at our facility since that time, so it was starting to create issues. So we took a head-on and tried to make these changes to it. So the next sign is what we're proposing on our dog park rules. And as you can see those, we've kept a lot of them, and this next slide kind of goes over what we're keeping and what we're changing. So right here, what's changing is you're going to see a condensed header. So the top of that sign, where it has all that stuff and says, here's where you can find it in the code, here's the state statute it's under, we're going to eliminate that, and we're going to make it a much more appealing, more friendly sign. We're about education, not enforcement. If we can educate them, hopefully, they'll self-enforce, and having that first welcoming sign is one of the keys on how we plan to do that. Another thing is you'll see that the age requirement in there, under the old rule set, or the current rule set, rather, you can be 16, but you have to be 12 to 15 with an adult in there. What we're going to say is 15 and under are accompanied by, or you can be 16, but 15 and under should be accompanied by an adult. So that way, if you're under 12, you're able to utilize that facility if you still have that proper parental guidance there with you. The next is we're going to condense the rules. So under the current rule set, we've condensed rules two and three, and that states all dogs must be accompanied by their owner, and all dogs must currently be licensed or vaccinated. We've combined those and condensed them into one rule to help shorten that sign where it's talking owners are limited to no more than three dogs, and all dogs must be currently licensed and vaccinated with tags and collars visible, and must be accompanied by owners at all times. So we're trying to condense the sign, make it a little more educational, a little more friendly. And then through this process, we also realized that one of the rules in that code went against another one of our ordinances. We were saying you can have two dogs in the dog park under the current rules, but you're able to own three dogs within the city of Cottonwood. So we didn't think it was fair that you can have two dogs and one sitting in the car while the other two get to go out and play. So we're going to match that ordinance, and we're now going to allow three dog parks in the dog park under this proposed rule set. And then the last thing is it aligns with the state law. We can't have that exemption for pit bulls on there anymore. Our current sign, you'll see it on the next slide, it's actually scratched out. So rather than take that sign down and replace it, it was just scratched out, and that's one of the things that brought up to our attention, like, if it's not on there, we really shouldn't have it on there. And that's why we're here before you tonight. And then the last bit of this is it's going to give us a better-looking sign, something that matches the city's brand of what we are today, not what we were when that sign put up. We are much more community-focused, business-friendly, and we want people to use our assets rather than go up and feel that every part of what they're doing is governed. So asking you guys tonight to consider adopting this new ordinance, it's going to help make that process more efficient. If we need to make these changes again, we can work with the city manager's office to make sure we can do these administratively and not have to come before council on all of these. I'm sure we will still keep everybody apprised of how that process works, but it's our goal to create a more efficient process, a little bit easier, update those rules and regulations, and then again, update that facility with that nice signage. The last two slides I have for you are just going to be what the current sign is versus what our proposed sign we would be here. It's a little more friendly, a little bit cleaner, has our logo on there, and we're able to tie in that inspiring and vibrant community during this update. And with that, I would open it to any questions.
Very good. Any questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I hope we're not being presumptuous, but we thought after two years, you'd trust your city manager with the dog park.
Well, we'll, we'll see.
I don't think it's a matter of trust. My part, and I don't, I can't speak for anybody else, but I enjoyed this presentation. I enjoyed hearing about the rules. But also, in the time that it took for us to hear this presentation, we also could have then entertained discussion and a vote on the substantive rules. I don't believe that the dog park rules and regulations would be changed so frequently that it would consume considerable council time. And so, again, personally, I would enjoy being kept in the loop and having the chance to weigh in. We do hear about folks that use, from, from folks that use the dog park. Again, I, it's not a matter of trust or that I don't want to delegate items to our city manager. It just seems as though the time, council's time is not overly consumed by the dog park. Apparently, we haven't discussed these rules in 11 years, so. And I don't know that the, what's more concerning to me is if staff feels that the process to come to council is inefficient or overly burdensome, then that's something that I think should be addressed primarily.
Mr. Mayor and councilmember Henry, so the process that's inefficient is only because the specific rule we're trying to change was in the code, and that's the one that goes against the state statute, discriminating against pit bull breeds. If that section wasn't in the code, we wouldn't have probably come to council looking to change these. But just to even eliminate that one rule, we had to go through the process. So the rules are more of an idea of what it could be, not a, this is our final sign that we'd like to come up with. So we will certainly happily bring anything back to council. It's at your guys' discretion and, and your purview. So if you'd like us to bring something to have that conversation of the rules, we are 100% happy to do it. We just had put together kind of a little brain chest on the staff level, working with our code enforcement officers, working with the PD department, and just going through how we'd like some of these rules to do. So these are more of a suggestion rather than the final sign that we would put out there, if that's council's decision and the way you guys would like us to go.
Counsel, any other thoughts on this? Vice Mayor, you're rich in there, so go ahead.
Yes. What kind of problems have we experienced with pit bulls since we've been allowing them in the park, if any?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, or Vice Mayor Hulse, there, it comes and goes, it ebbs and flows. A lot of the times, people don't report. We had a staff member not too long ago who, his, his dog had gotten into a tussle there at the park, and rather than fully report it, he just let me know, hey, you know, we're not going to go back to the dog park for this, you know? It was a pit bull breed. It mostly is the conversations between the dog owners that started, where you go and you see, it says on the sign, you can't have the pit bull, but then the pit bull is in the park. That's where you get a lot of that contention. But as far as actual incidents being reported, we haven't had very many reported incidents through the Parks and Recreation Department with it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Just a comment. I understand what you're doing, and I trust the city manager implicitly, but I do agree with the principle and what councilmember Henry brought up. This is as close as I'll get to the dog park.
I recall spending many, many, many long hours in the creation of the dog park and drafting the rules for the dog park and the, the various entities that oversaw. Well, that was the garden, actually. That wasn't so much the dog park, but, but I understand what you, you know, your points were taken to. If any, if there's any substantial change, I think, to the rules and regs, I believe it, it should come to council. I believe it likely would, something changed that just... Something, a change that just would be more housekeeping in nature, I would certainly be willing to let our manager handle that. But I think in your discretion, in any manager's discretion, any substantive changes would come back to council for a policy discussion. But I think what you're proposing here really is, is excellent in that we're making it friendlier, more welcoming. We're really not changing anything that isn't just complying with, with state statutes. So I'm in favor of approving this, this ordinance.
And just generally, and I know the, the dog park is a particularly important issue for the community and for the council, but as we go through the code, we are looking for opportunities as the city gets and has gotten bigger to find things that don't necessarily need to be, because things are embedded in the code, elevated to the council. But point taken, if, if council, and I think we've heard that the council wants to know about any significant changes to dog park rules, but it is council's prerogative.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I can suggest, no power grab here on this one. There are other things that I'd much rather have the ability to make decisions on than this one, because I can always say it's got to go to council. I don't get a lot of complaints, but we do get complaints usually about noise when it comes to the dog park, or people using them before hours, and it's probably the only real complaints I get. But it sounds like it pleases council. We'll bring this back corrected with the new set of rules that we're recommending versus as written that gives me the authority to make the changes. So we'll just bring this back, probably on consent agenda, based on what we hear tonight.
I think we'll have to...
Unless the attorney has a different idea.
We'll need to bring back a different ordinance for a first reading.
Okay. All right, I, does that please counsel, then, to bring it back for a first reading with, okay, very good. That's what we'll do, then. Thank you, sir.
Perfect, thank you.
All right. Last up this evening is item five. It's a request from Spectrum Healthcare for financial support for its COVID-19 vaccination program in Cottonwood and eastern Yavapai County.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. I'm Kirsten Lennon, again, Financial Services Director. We received a request from Spectrum Healthcare in, for assistance. They have started a vaccination program, as you know, mentioned earlier, and in their letter, they requested $50,000 to help with the cost. And you can see that the total cost to them was about $860,000. So the $50,000 is just a drop in the bucket there, but they have asked for this assistance. We received CARES Act money that covered our police salaries this year, and so that in turn gave us some cost savings that we put into our reserves, and we are suggesting that we allocate $50,000 of that to Spectrum to cover their, help cover their cost. And Jane Witt from Spectrum is here, if you'd like to ask her any questions, and if you'd like to speak with her.
All right, counsel, questions for Ms. Lennon at this time? No. Ms. Witt, would you like to present to counsel?
Yes, I just would like to say thank you so much for considering our request. We actually had to put together our mass vaccinations on a very quick timeframe to set up an environment where people were safe, secure, and respected. We set it up also so that we could provide vaccinations for as many individuals as we could possibly go through the process. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to see our pods, but they are set up so that we can maximize the effort. Unfortunately, the costs for all of these were not covered by any entities, so the transportation, technology, the food covering, the insurances, et cetera, are all costs that we are looking to provide as a partnership and have a resource from the, to the of Cottonwood. So again, we greatly appreciate our partnership with you, and do request some financial assistance.
Very good. Questions, counsel, for Ms. Witt?
Mr. Mayor, if I can just add, I have volunteered at the, the pod, and it is a first-class operation. Spectrum did a bang-up job setting this up. FEMA, I, I spent half my time next to one of our FEMA volunteers stationed out of Florida, up here helping us out, and they were duly impressed with this operation. So kudos to Spectrum. Great job, wonderful partner, as usual.
Thank you very, very much, and we appreciate the time that you have spent with us.
All right.
I have also been to that facility, facility and, and impressed as well. This is within our purview. I know people other than Cottonwood residents are using it, so I think this is definitely something we should approve at this amount.
All right. Any other discussion from counsel?
I would just concur. My wife was gone, has gone through Spectrum, and as Mr. Corbin indicated, and as Councilmember Wildon has indicated, it's a first-class, outstanding operation that you have at the Christian church facilities here in Cottonwood, not only just getting the people through, but the parking and the whole situation. You're in and out of there in about 30 minutes at the most, and it's a wonderful thing you're doing.
All right.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion, then, counsel.
Make a motion? I would make a motion to provide $50,000 to Spectrum Healthcare to support its COVID-19 vaccination program in Cottonwood and eastern Yavapai County.
Second.
All right, counsel, or, excuse me, Vice Mayor Hulse made the motion, Councilmember Narin seconded it. Ms. Jimenez, if we could, please take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurot?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good. And Ms. Witt, thanks to you, your, your staff, and of course, all the volunteers there at your pod. You guys are doing excellent work. It's just money well spent. You've always been a great partner, and you continue to impress me with what you do in our community, so thank you.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
All right, next is claims and adjustments. I would motion to pay the claims.
Second.
Second.
All right, Mayor made the motion. We'll give Councilmember Kurot the second there. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I would move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, Mayor made the motion. Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, counsel.